Trustee Rippey.
Here.
Trustee Benucci.
Here.
Trustee Fay.
Here.
Trustee Lamb.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here, if we could rise to the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Presidential comments?
Have one quick proclamation, whereas Northern Illinois Food Bank is a nonprofit organization that engages the community in commitment to feed our hungry neighbors, and whereas Northern Illinois Food Bank provides meals to over 60,000 different people each week throughout a network of food pantries, soup kitchens, shelters, youth and senior feeding programs, including over 80 in Will County, and specifically four food pantries within the Village of Plainfield, and whereas the Northern Illinois Food Bank distributed over 50 million meals to hungry neighbors in FY 2014, and whereas September is Hunger Action Month, whereas Northern Illinois Food Bank and over 200 food banks across the country are hosting awareness campaigns in events to bring attention and take action for the cause of hunger, and whereas September 4th, 2014 is National Go Orange Day. Now therefore, let it be resolved that through the power vested in me as the village president of the Village of Plainfield, Illinois, let all who do have and will reside in the Village of Plainfield, Illinois, know that the Village of Plainfield joins Northern Illinois Food Bank in proclaiming September 2014 as Hunger Action Month for the Village of Plainfield. Is there someone?
Thank you.
To go green ever?
Okay, I'm Patty Hemaness and I work for Northern Illinois Food Bank. He pretty much gave a lot of the facts. If there's any more information that you'd like, please visit our website, or I can give you more information after the meeting. We just want to say thank you. This is not just a piece of paper to us, this is hope for about 600,000 of hungry neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't have anything else.
Trustees' comments?
I would like to acknowledge and thank all the volunteers that worked on the Midwest Brewers Fest this past weekend. I know that it takes months and months of planning and many man-hours. Thank you for your dedication to the cause. I would also like to, we've had some requests and some discussion with residents regarding putting the complete board packet online, not just the agenda. I fully support that and believe that we could be more transparent by putting the entire board packet online. Thank you.
Are there any other trustee comments?
I'd like to comment on the competing thing to the Brew Fest. They had an open house at Fairfield Ridge, same time, same afternoon, same moisture precipitation, but the house that they showed, showed very well. This is what we talked about a week ago, going to show up in Ridge, over by Ridge, whatever it is. And so I think it looked very nice. The windows were very large, very light, very open house, good model, I think we'll put together, if they do the things that we agreed to last week where they do the 360 external, I think we got a real winner for the village and for them, and it looked like a really nice opportunity to move into Fairfield Ridge too, so, glad you do a nice job.
Are there any other trustee comments?
Just, I too would like to thank the organizers of the Brew Fest. You had some terrible challenges this past weekend and things happened, but there's hundreds and hundreds of hours that go into a work like this, so we thank you very much for all the efforts of trying to make that a successful event and, you know, things happen and they're beyond your control. Thank you.
Are there any other trustee comments? This will be the time for public comments on items not on the agenda, not to exceed three to five minutes per topic.
Hi, everybody, I'm Vicki Palito of 25242 Blakely Drive. I'm just on my last publicity push for an event that'll be at Plainfield Public Library this Thursday, 6:30 to 8:30. Citizen Advocacy Center will be out giving sort of a presentation on discussion on the proper collection of ballot petition signatures, how to challenge ballot petitions, and how to defend against challenge. So if anyone's interested, wants to come out, free at the library, some light refreshments, the lower level, large meeting room, 6:30 to 8:30 this Thursday. And if any of you are thinking about being involved in a campaign from springtime forward, you really owe it to yourself if you're going to make the effort to collect signatures to do it right. You certainly owe it to your candidate or cause if you're going to get involved, and you really owe it to people who sign your petition, because I think it really aggravates people when they sign a petition and take the time to listen to your spiel, and then they find out that petition just went nowhere. It just sort of died on the vine. So if you want to get it right, it's not real hard to do, but there are rules, please come out to the library, 6:30 this Thursday. Thanks.
Question Vicki, you got to be, any handouts?
Yes.
We're trying to recruit a number of people for candidates, I don't think they'll have time to show up on Thursday, but if you have some things, we'd be happy to distribute it to people who show an interest.
We will have handouts. I'm not sort of the owner of sort of the intellectual property of the presentation, so I know we won't be video recording it, but we'll have handouts, and what I'm going to see if on Thursday if I can do is get copies of them and PDF them and make them available somewhere online, so anyone can go and fetch them. Now I do know if you go to citizenadvocacycenter.org, they will at any time, if you email them a petition or something you're working on, you have a question about if it's right, if you email it to them, it might take them a few days to get back to you, but they will give you one-on-one attention about, am I doing this right? Did I mess this up? What do I need to go back to do to fix it? But I will try to get handouts to people and make them available, and I'll let you know how that goes.
Great, thank you for a good service, it's well needed, so.
Before we go any further, Commander Ruggles has a short presentation to make regarding last weekend.
Mr. Mayor, Village Board, as you've all commented already, Midwest Brewers Fest was this past Saturday. Obviously, Mother Nature made quite a challenging situation for the organizers. The week leading up to it, we had considerable rain. We all know the river was rising and the property down there at the riverfront does border the river. We had been monitoring it, the river did in fact crest right about at its bank, and Friday morning there was observations made that it looked like the property was wet, but that it would be usable. Midwest Brewers Fest did start Saturday morning, or I should say Saturday afternoon on time, right about noon with the early admissions. As, within the next hour, we began tracking a thunderstorm as it moved into the area. That thunderstorm was predicted to drop torrential rain, bring in some wind, and in fact, just before it came to us, we did have a report of some rotation down by Morris, Illinois. We monitored the storm, we met with the organizers, suggested that they do in fact close temporarily. Due to the weather conditions, there was also a risk of some lightning with that storm, which we did in fact receive the lightning threat. The tents and such in the middle of an open field was our greatest concern, that people, if they remained underneath the tents and in the open field, would be exposed to that lightning, wind, rain, et cetera. So we did urge them to go ahead and temporarily close, which the organizers did. We made announcements, asked people to seek shelter in their cars, provided shelter in the pump house building there for those that did not have transportation. I'm sure many actually found new friends with cars. The thunderstorm did pass over us, no real severe weather, but it did drop a large amount of rain in a short period of time. The problem then became that the grounds became substantially saturated. What was already potentially a muddy area became basically a mud pit. And as the vehicle traffic continued to come in for that, trying to find parking spaces in the grass, it became treacherous to travel those vehicles, mud everywhere. As the day progressed, when we shut down, we had had a discussion about whether or not there could be an opportunity for Midwest Brewers Fest to extend by an hour to 6:00 PM. Their original closing time was 5:00 PM. We'd actually stopped at right at about 1:00, which is where the general emission would occur, so we were still having quite a few people show up. The discussion did not include the deteriorating road conditions, or I should say the deteriorating grounds conditions out there, and it wasn't until later in the afternoon, as we were dealing with more and more vehicles stuck in the mud, the treacherous inability to get them out without spraying mud everywhere, vehicles driving through the parked cars and such, that it became clear to us that extending those hours would be a difficult situation for us. We did not know exactly how many cars were stuck, because people were still inside the event and had not yet returned to their vehicles. We watched several drivers trying to get out of there, nearly strike pedestrians, and we decided that it was an unsafe condition that we wanted to end on time at 5:00 PM, because we felt we would need the next several hours to get vehicles extracted from the property. So we took several pictures, this is actually the storm front rolling in and over the property out there, as is these next several. As you can see, it got really dark. This one starts now, as you can see the ruts were just starting, this is shortly after the rain actually stopped, and as you can see, the ruts were becoming quite apparent. This was one of the main areas right north of the actual fest grounds where people were parking and then trying to relocate their cars. The worst area was actually in the back, behind the fest, which is where most of the volunteers and staff had actually parked. They suffered the worst through this, that's by far, they had a lot of people to deal with. This is actually in the rear, after we started getting cars out of there. That became treacherous to extract vehicles from. As you can see, the ruts got quite deep. The river actually did start to rise there in the back. The standing water you see in the rear of that picture is the river water coming up over its banks and flooding that field. The conditions again, we didn't predict this, we didn't know that the water was going to be that heavy, that we were going to experience that much rainfall. Obviously, moving forward, our greatest concern at this point is that we have contingency plans for parking and for motor vehicle traffic out there. Where majority of the people were, it got churned up, but it was not to the depth and the level that we saw where the vehicles were traveling. Based on the property, its configuration next to the river, obviously its concerns with high water or torrential downpours, our greatest concern therefore would be having contingency plans to move vehicles off-site, to have parking off-site, and therefore, we're asking on behalf of the chief, I know we've discussed that any other events that the village board would consider for this property should definitely consider alternative parking and transportation for people arriving at the event. Are there any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
What's, when did you have everything cleared out?
We actually, we, they stopped the event at 5:00. It was about an hour and 15 minutes to get majority of the attendees out of there, and then there were still vehicles parked again. The last vehicles parked in there that had to be removed were mostly the vendors and the volunteers, so it was the staff working the event. They were in the farthest back portion of the property, and it was the most difficult to get the vehicles out of. I know actually the truck that was on there is a food service truck that became stuck on Saturday morning. That was not extracted, I believe, until about 7:00 PM, 7:15 that night.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Not them, we'll proceed with the business meeting. We're seeking a motion.
Good evening Board. Jake Wilkin, live on Newcastle Street. The reason why I'm here tonight, in 2013, as part of the sidewalk replacement program, there was some damage done to my property, and I've been trying to work with Public Works departments to rectify the situation. Obviously, that's not working, so that's why I'm here tonight. I made copies. Which is going to document the damage, the communication that has taken place between myself, mostly myself, and some village staff. There's photos of the damage that was done by the contractor that was doing the work. And I'm here just trying to find out what's, what am I supposed to do as a homeowner? The village hires a contractor that comes, does damage to my property. And you'll see from the communication log, there extensive communication done on my part to try and keep things moving, to try and get some of these problem rectified. And some things have been done, but most of what has been done on my property has been without my knowledge. And you can see from early communications that I had with Public Works, in fact, made several calls with no return calls. It wasn't until I made a direct contact with Allen, left a message, that I did get somebody to respond from Public Works. That's a little frustrating, when people are not calling you back. Scott from Public Works came out, viewed the damage, and I expressly communicated to him that before anything was done, I wanted to know what the plan was. Come home a few days later, and to my understanding, Public Works let the contractor come back and further do damage to my property by making the situation worse. You'll see in emails that I have there, I not only communicated to Scott verbally that evening, but also followed it up in an email that's attached. So I don't know where the communication loss happened, it's definitely not on my end. You'll see a follow-up communication, because after about a week's time there, nothing was done, no communication back. So, I don't know where the accountability lies with contractors that we hire for the village. I'm sure they're licensed and bonded, I'm sure that's a requirement, but I don't think we're holding them accountable. Obviously, you're going to see from the communication logs there, there's, you know, several attempts made to contact Allen and no return call. Things were pushed on to Scott. When I didn't get calls back from Allen, made contact with you Brian, left a voicemail. That was then turned over to Allen, where I did get a call from Allen. Mayor Collins, I've left a voicemail message with you, and that has been turned over to Allen. I mean, I'm not even getting communication back from folks on the panel here. It's frustrating as a homeowner and resident in the city and somebody that's paying taxes. So, I'm here in front of you asking what, what can I do? I still have damage done to my property. I'd like to know what my next course of action is. I would like my property returned to its original condition.
I'll be happy to talk with you after the meeting, Mr. Wilkin.
My contact information is on there. I'm not going to stick around for the whole meeting. You can see from the communication log, I've spent a lot of my own personal time on this, I'm not going to stick around for the whole meeting, but by all means, give me a call.
I'll follow up.
I would suggest you do, because it's going to be a quick meeting, we got two votes to take.
Okay, okay.
When you go through this far, you may as well stick.
Okay, alright, buck me into it.
But we do have, we're going to add an executive session to talk about real estate, so. If you want to stick around, I can talk with you briefly after the regular meeting.
At a timeframe, I'll be talking on them.
I'll call you in the morning.
Perfect. Alright, any other questions?
Thank you, thank you.
Mayor Collins, may I make a comment about the Midwest Brewers Fest? I know, okay. You know what, I know, I thought we were going to discuss the Midwest Brewers Fest in greater detail. We received a police report from Commander Ruggles with, which was interesting, and unfortunately, we had the nasty weather, and that is a part of our planning. If you live in the Midwest, you have those type of situations. We have three individuals that I can recognize, one unfortunately had to leave room. Thomas Ruane, we have Robert Epley in the back, and we also have another individual that I'm very familiar with, Jonathan Prue. Obviously, there are people who are very active with Midwest Brewers Fest and have done a tremendous amount of work. And I know Jonathan has tremendous humility, and he would never run to the microphone. I know another individual, Mr. Epley loves to go to a microphone, and he, yes, he will. And is there, would you like to approach the microphone and just give some reflections on the event? I understand, I didn't want the, I didn't want this entire thing to pass without having a little bit of a presentation from some of the organizers, that's all.
My name is Ken McMullin, I'm the president of the Midwest Brewers Fest, and to be honest, we're still closing down the fest. Physically cleaning up, returning kegs. We've not been able to meet, to discuss, any response to, or, you know, even decide what we're doing. I would like to say that we appreciate the support of the mayor and the Board of Trustees and village staff in helping us host this event. I did write this, so that I would not get this wrong, but the weather, the weather obviously posed many challenges for us, but we are proud of the determination of our volunteers in meeting that challenge, and we will learn from this, and next year will be, will be a better event.
Thank you. You know what, you can never say negative things about the particular event, because it was really successful. Trustee Lamb attended Woodstock in the late 60s, and it, there was a lot of rain there that day, for that weekend, and you know what, that's part of the event. Oftentimes, you know what, you may think it's an awful negative things, you know, it's not sunny California, but they're having earthquakes. You know what, a little bit of rain, a little bit of mud goes a long way, and you know what, everybody will talk about it. It was not a total disaster, an awful lot of work went into it, and an awful lot of people appreciated it, and the Village of Plainfield will really appreciate it when we get a contribution for the River Walk. And so, all in toll, you can feel somewhat bad on occasion, but you also have to look for the silver lining in the dark cloud. It was very positive, and the people who made the presentation did a wonderful job, and I just want to thank you and your organization.
Thank you, thank you for your comments.
Are there any other public comments? Not, we'll proceed with the business meeting. We're seeking a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Rippey?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. We're seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda to include minutes of the board meeting held on August 11th, bills paid and bills payable reports for August 25th, cash and investment revenue and expenditure reports for July.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve items A through C under the consent agenda. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Rippey?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Harvest 5K Run. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to authorize the road closures as identified in the staff report for the Harvest 5K Run to be held on September 28th.
That is my motion.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item?
This is another traditional well-run event that says March history, but they also do a very nice job every year, so. Talking about even more people attending than the wounded warrior one, but they've handled that many before, and they do a nice job, so.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not, the motion was made and seconded to approve the road closures as identified for the Harvest 5K Run. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Rippey?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2014 Homecoming Parade. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to authorize the road closures as identified in the staff report for the 2014 Homecoming Parade to be held on Saturday, October 4th. So move?
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item? Hearing none, I'll proceed with the role. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Rippey?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Administrator's report?
None tonight.
Management Services report?
No report.
Engineers report?
No report.
Planning Department report? Building Department report?
And your packet is the monthly report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
One question, Dean, I noticed we got a $3 million house going in. Is this the one that we saw several years ago that we increased the lot size, put two lots together so they could put an indoor pool in?
No, it's not the one.
It's not the one?
No.
Okay, $3 million is a big house.
We need a few more of those.
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Public Works report?
I just have one item on the agenda this evening. The village did receive bids, sealed bids and open bids related to the sealing program. It's used to be called the tar and chip program, but actually that's been updated to be called the Chip Seal Program. It's a different product that the contractors utilize. This product is typically used on roadways that were gravel roadways or are gravel roadways, and/or they've had a tar and chip or tar seal in the past. It's a coating that goes on the top, it keeps the dust down, it helps maintain the integrity of the base, and it keeps water out of the undersurface of the roadway and helps protect it too as well. There are several roads that are on the list, Gilmore, Cherry Road, Johnson Road, and Wheeler Road. These are all typically rural roads, but they are within the Village of Plainfield, we have annexed these areas, and we did receive one bid. This is a contractor that's completed the work for several of the townships in the area, but they are over 30% below the engineer's estimate at just over $94,000. So I'd be happy to answer any questions related to this program. I know the question came up a couple of weeks ago, but this is one of those programs that is successful in extending the life of the roadways in the areas at a very cost-effective manner.
I move, we authorize the village president to award the 2014 Chip Seal Program to AC Pavement Striping Company in the Pavement Stripping Company in the amount of $94,780.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Rippey?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Police Chiefs' report?
Yes, thank you. In your packet is the Pima report for March, April and May, and also the Police Department's operation report, if you have any questions.
Traditionally, you, on an annual basis, Pima has how many volunteer hours?
Over 10,000.
Over 10,000. But these three months, we're talking about, just about 1,000. Are the other nine months usually a lot more, or is it always finding things quiet this year?
If I could refer to Commander Ruggles. I'm so glad he's here tonight.
Actually, the Pima hours have been dropping the last couple of years. We're not doing 10,000 hours like we were there for a while. Off the top of my head, I believe last year, we were somewhere in the neighborhood of 6,000 or 7,000 hours. So, we have been seeing a decrease over the last couple of years. Part of that was a decrease in our volunteer level for the last couple of years. We've actually brought on roughly six more volunteers again, which takes us up to, I believe, we're at 28 or 29 volunteers total in Pima at this time. We started off this year, actually, with a bang, and we were seeing, in the first couple of months, half the total number of incidents that we had seen for the previous year. But since then, we have actually slowed down. Many of our recent storm episodes have actually not produced a lot of severe weather, with the exception of the July storm that did produce the EF1 tornado. Most of them have resulted in very minor damage in the village, with the exception of that storm. And so, we have not gotten a lot of man-hours out of the storm season this year, with the exception of that July storm. They are still volunteering for all the special events. They are still coming out for many of the other functions in the village. We have just not seen the total number of man-hours that we have recently. Some of that is also, we've also had a few Pima members that have requested leaves of absences due to health issues or related family concerns. And so, some of our members, even though they're still active with us, they've been gone for several months on end before returning to. So, there has been a general decrease over the last couple of years. I don't have one single thing to point to that. It's, just seems to be we're slowly tapering down.
Well, as long as you still have the volunteers, you're still committed. That's the important thing. It's nice if you don't have to utilize them. It's nice to be, the organization is tremendously valuable to us, as you well know, so I just want to make sure that we've done everything we can to support your activities, and if you're not busy, so be it.
They're still there if we need them. So, they came out, actually, this afternoon, several of them, just to check that second line of thunderstorms that came through, so.
Good. Thank you.
You know, Commander Ruggles, before you leave the podium, I'd like to make one particular comment. You know, a cogent word that is used continually is volunteer. If you were to pay these individuals just the minimum wage that's ascribed in the state of Illinois or in the United States, we'd have over $100,000 worth of expenses. This $100,000 that the village of Plainfield profits by, the taxpayers profit by, and the entire community profits from your help, your diligence, and it's really appreciated. And I know you tell your, we always have one, we have the special awards program for the Pima volunteers. They're much appreciated.
Yes, they are. Thank you very much for saying that. Again, on behalf of Chief County Peck and I, who administrate that program and that department, we're not volunteers, obviously, but all the people we work with greatly appreciate the recognition, and they just love coming out and helping any way they can, so.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions for Commander Greco?
Talk about the next report, or?
Sure. If you'd like, if you have any questions for the police operations.
Just a couple of comments, if you will. I'm pleased, it's been for the last several months, the decline from 2012 through 13 through 14, the number of incidences you're reporting, the arrests and so on, they continue to go down. That basically bodes well for the village. One thing I'd also like to comment positively on is the red light revenue. It's at $5,800 in 2014. I assume we haven't changed our rules for issuing the warrants or whatever?
No, sir. We have not changed the rules. There was a camera down at 135th and 59 that has been corrected, so the cameras are back and up and running. There was two cameras down for a significant amount of time, so.
Okay, that's the reason it's the numbers down as low as it is.
That's correct.
I thought we'd be an extra safe, and people are really following the rules.
I would like to say that we continue to see the, where those cameras are installed, we continue to see crashes in those intersections continually go down.